Commissioner Del Negro.
Present.
Commissioner Wong.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
Chair Joe.
Present.
Four members of the Planning Commission are present. Planning Commissioner Quigg is excused.
Thank you. All right, let's call roll call for City Council, please.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Councilmember Holliburton.
Present.
Councilmember Fun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Papin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Papin. Mayor Oliva.
Here.
Four members of the City Council are present. Vice Mayor Papin's not present.
Okay, you maybe you could let us know when she she gets online. She might be having trouble with her computer or something. I know she was planning to be here. Okay, shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, and welcome tonight to our joint meeting with, uh, this is our second meeting with, uh, our Planning Commissioner and our City Council. We've got a lot done and we're very, very, uh, productive on our last meeting. What I'd like to do is first have, we have our staff that would like to make a presentation. And then this time around, we'll go to City Council first and then to Planning Commission. And I'm asking that we have time enough that we get some public comments. So if everybody could please get their thoughts and questions together as we go along with the staff report and maybe take, um, no more than six minutes apiece. And that should round us out to be out by seven. There is a Park and Rec Commission meeting after this. So with that being said, staff, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Oliva, members of the City Council, members of the Planning Commission, Tom Williams, City Manager. Um, just real quick, I'll hand it over to, uh, Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director here in a few seconds. But again, this is, uh, as you had mentioned, Mayor, a very important meeting as we progress through the general plan. Uh, tonight's, uh, uh, joint study session of the City Council and Planning Commission include four elements of the general plan that we'll be reviewing this evening, mobility and circulation, recreation arts and culture element, natural resources conservation element, and the fourth element, health, safety and hazardous materials element. So, um, again, this is part of, uh, under state law, um, there are seven elements that are required, uh, in a general plan and and these are required elements uh, under state planning law. And, uh, if there are no questions of me, I will just simply hand it over to Ms. Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director, and then our consultant team, uh, for the line share of the presentation.
And just to note that Vice Mayor Papin is on as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and Planning Commissioners. Can you hear me okay and see my screen?
Looks good, Darcy.
Okay, so thank you so much for being here tonight. Won't be necessarily as exciting as the Super Bowl, but since the 49ers weren't in it, maybe, maybe it will be. Uh, but thank you so much, Darcy Smith, your City Millbury Community Development Director. And we have a great presentation tonight, about twenty-two slides, just hitting the highlights here because we want to save a lot of time for questions and answers and feedback. Um, as the city manager said, this is sort of a procedural check-in on policy direction, and we really want to have regular check-ins. Uh, but we wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for tremendous team effort. So while I get some of the glory tonight quarterbacking this effort, um, we have a huge amount of city teammates who worked on this, led by Roscoe Mottar, our Playing Manager, and Nestor Guavara, our Associate Planner and Project Manager, as well as our consultant team. You'll hear the presentation tonight by Jim Harnish, Principal and Project Director. He's also joined by Brent Givens, Senior Project Manager, and we have our secret consultants. But what you're seeing tonight, more so than the last meeting or our past meetings, is a huge, tremendous team effort. So what you're seeing tonight, the elements, they were reviewed by pretty much every department in the city, including very high-level executives such as Chief Corpus, our Fire Marshal and Fire Chief, are all of our public work staff, including our Interim Director, our Recreation Director, and they, I'm, I'm not going to lie, they read every page and they edited it heavily. And so you're seeing a really complete staff product, which I think we should be very tremendously proud of, and I appreciate everyone's hard work. So the objective tonight is to give you a quick presentation regarding these four elements, and these, I will say, are a mouthful, but I know not a fan of abbreviations. But we'll step through them in detail, and, um, really, the names are indicative of, of what they reflect. So we'll start with mobility and circulation element, move on to the fun element, as I say, recreation arts and culture, then the natural resource, resource conservation element, and last, health, safety and hazardous materials elements. These are different elements than you saw last time. Last time you saw, um, land use and built environment and economic development. Those were kind of visionary, sort of put the city thumbprint on it. Um, really heavy policy decisions. This, all, I, I, I won't lie, is much more reflective of, um, policies, laws and procedures that are kind of already in place, and then the city of Millbury refines it to sort of match our, our local interests. Um, but a lot of what you see tonight, sort of heavy, more technical, reflecting, um, federal law, state law, regional laws, and then, um, local laws and ordinances that we already have in place. So our goal, as with the previous day sessions, is for you to give us our comments, um, so we can move forward and finalize these elements. And I want to emphasize what you're seeing are called preliminary public drafts. Some cities jump right to public review drafts. This is, you know, we wanted to get this before you, but we still have a lot, um, a lot of time, and that's really important to emphasize, is that we're still in, as I call, like that Thanksgiving dinner cooking phase where we're trying to get, you know, the turkey in the oven, turn the timer on, um, to get it cooked. But as you know, our current general plan is outdated, was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, but I will say, if you read the document, there's a lot of policies that, that we're still carrying forward, we're refining a little bit. Um, but that was a solid general plan of its era. Um, we did amend it locally for the housing element, circulation element, but we are required to update this to reflect this season's long-range growth. So again, what you're seeing tonight is a long-range plan through twenty-year horizon and really at a high-level policy level. So our feedback tonight is on these items, and we're really looking for feedback on key goals and policies and the implementation programs. And if I can emphasize, I think the implementation programs are really, um, sort of the most meaningful parts of it. Um, some of these programs are done once, some annually, some are ongoing. Many of them are things that your hard-working staff is already doing, um, or planning or doing as part of a future work plan, and there are some new implementation items, but not really that many. Um, there is a fiscal impact to all of these, and, and we're not here to talk about that tonight. We'll address that in future budget and CIP process. Um, I think you know this is part of a very simultaneous planning effort, which I'm pleased to say I can really see the puzzle pieces fitting together. Um, and you, as a council and Plan Commission, have been very productive, very, um, collaborative, and I'm confident that we can get through this process by the end of the year. You made a lot of progress last year. So for anyone who is or new in our audience, we adopted the Active Transportation Plan. That informed a lot of the content, um, that you'll see tonight in the circulation mobility element. And that's a really exciting citywide bike and master plan, Ped Master Plan. Um, we're working hard on that downtown El Camino Real specific plan, and some of what we'll touch about tonight will inform that, such as parking, you know, the circulation element. And then you recall, you reviewed the Streetscape Plan in December, and that's being finalized too, and will be part of that really important specific plan. So where we are is, we're still in early twenty twenty-two, although it's going by fast. So you're reviewing and finalizing the general plan update. Next, you'll see the specific plan. I'm really excited about that. And in the middle of twenty twenty-two, the main thing we need to accomplish, the reason why you're seeing these again kind of early, is the Draft Environmental Impact Report. And that will include the, the high-level and detailed sequo analysis or environmental analysis of all of this um, content that you're seeing in the specific plan. And then the goal is by October to have this back before you for adoption. And again, I'm confident, given how much progress we've made and given your collaborative policy direction, that we can get there. So it'll be a busier, but a really exciting one. Uh, so this general plan, again, serves as the city's long-term blueprint. It's a requirement for every city and county. It contains the city's goals, policies and programs upon which you base future land use, infrastructure, budget decision and prioritization. I think when you read these elements, you really think, wow, this is kind of like an encyclopedia britannica of the city, or, gosh, I didn't realize the city did this much. I think it's really an exciting thing to read, um, and we have a wide audience for it that I hope will appreciate it. And most important thing, especially when you read, when you read, these are technical elements that are for you tonight, is really, these will bring the city's policies and programs up to date, modernize them, respond to change in state and regional plans and projects and regulations and circumstances that were under, such as state housing legislation, mobility changes, things like high-speed rail and water supply, et cetera. So with that quick introduction, I will turn it over to Jim Harnish, Mentor Harnish, who will make the rest of the presentation. Um, just about thirteen, fourteen more slides, and then we'll, um, hand it back to the mayor to facilitate the study session. You know Jim is here. He might just have trouble connecting. Seems like the era that we're in, but let's give him a few more minutes. Or seconds, actually, not minutes. In a couple of minutes, I can start and take over, but I know he's there.
Okay, am I here?
Yes, there you are. Great.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, so I'll start over. It wasn't very long. Uh, Mayor, members of the council and Chair members of the commission, my name is Jim Harnish. Uh, I'm the, uh, Project Director for this project. As Darcy pointed out, I'm joined tonight by Brent Givens, who is a Senior Project Manager with our team, and we are backed by several other, uh, really, as Darcy mentioned earlier, uh, uh, consulting firms. Killson Associates, uh, worked, uh, closely with us on the mobility element. Uh, Rincon Consultants, our EIR Consultants also prepared several of the elements with us. So it's a large team standing behind this, uh, presentation. I'm not sure I can work the forty-niners and Thanksgiving into my presentation of like Darcy did, but I'll do my best to make it focused. Um, and thank you, Darcy. So, um, as Darcy pointed out, uh, we have, uh, actually seven, oh, Tom pointed out that we have seven house, uh, uh, elements of the general plan, and as Darcy pointed out, we're talking about four of them tonight. Uh, and I'm going to just touch briefly on the policies and programs, uh, of each of the four elements, similar to the presentation of a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, stop me if you have questions, uh, during the presentation, but we have plenty of time to discuss this afterwards. Next slide. So the first, uh, and, uh, one of the, um, kind of, uh, more focused on elements is the mobility and circulation element. Uh, and it's tied closely to the land use element that we discussed, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there are keys, key topics that we address, uh, policy, goal, policy topics. Um, and we see them here, uh, streets and roadways, transit pedestrian, and regional transportation plan. Crosscutting through all of these is the Complete Streets, uh, program, uh, was instituted by the state, uh, quite a few years ago, but it's a key to having, um, really, uh, uh, a, a, a street and mobility, um, network that serves all members of the community, uh, in, uh, all different ways of travel. So it's a very important. It's a very important topic that the mobility element focuses on. There are a number of, uh, implementation programs, uh, related to mobility and circulation. And, uh, well, uh, we've just summarized some, uh, key ones here. We've, uh, you adopted the Active Transportation Plan recently, but we have a program to update that regularly. Um, several programs to address parking and, uh, TDM, uh, monitoring. And that, let me, uh, stop here, uh, and talk about the implementation of policies. If you'll notice in your, uh, in your review of the, um, the general plan, there are, uh, there are a number of different ways of policy implementation. Some are your review of projects, uh, your policies and how you address projects, uh, a number of, um, uh, responsibilities for staff, for financing, uh, intergovernmental coordination. So, uh, it, it is, um, programs, implementation programs are not the only way a general plan is implemented, but they are an active way. The difference between the implementation efforts are the implementation programs have, uh, specific responsibilities, uh, amongst the different departments, have, um, timing attached to them, uh, so that you know when the program is completed and implemented. Uh, and a, uh, so there is a more measured, uh, uh, measurement related to the, the implementation programs. So, um, uh, the second element that we're talking about tonight, uh, Recreation Arts and Culture, as Darcy pointed out, is the, maybe the more, one of the more fun elements, or addresses some really important community, uh, issues, uh, particularly focuses particularly on trees and urban forest, park recreation and historic preservation. The, some of the key policy topics, uh, that we've, uh, in, are included in here, focus again on the number on the, the, um, the urban forests and tree preservation. Uh, focus on continuing, um, uh, the festivals and, and events that the city is known for, and then, of course, uh, addressing, uh, a new park and recreation master plan. And, uh, uh, implementation programs follow along that same, um, theme, uh, focus on, uh, a park and recreation master plan and, um, uh, park facilities continue, uh, in a more focused, uh, historic, uh, property inventory to keep track of, uh, historic, um, um, resources in the city and then a tree management plan. So the third, um, element that, uh, we're discussing tonight is the Resource Conservation, uh, element. Uh, and it focuses on, this is one of the key early original general plan requirements from general plan law, the focus on conservation and open space. And obviously, it's become a more critical, uh, issue as we're addressing climate change. So uh, much of what you see, um, in, uh, the, this element is addressing some aspects related to, uh, climate change. Next slide. And we've highlighted some of the key, uh, policy areas, uh, for resource conservation, um, the green infrastructure, water conservation and efficiency. All, many of these things, the city's been very active in, in the past. So this is a continuation of, uh, existing policies and programs and an expansion of that. And let me mention, um, let's go back to policies here. The other thing that I wanted to mention here, talking about a continuation of, uh, city policies and programs. If you also note, um, the policies and programs, we identify the source of the policy or the program. In a number of cases, uh, these are policies that are in your existing general plan or programs and existing general plan as well. And we're, uh, either continuing them on as, uh, uh, they've been established in the past, or maybe some modifications. So you'll, uh, note as you, in your review, that we've kept track of the, the important policies and programs that, uh, have been effective in the past for the city. Next slide. So, uh, the Resource Conservation, uh, implementation programs are, uh, really a large number of them. Uh, but we highlighted a few key, uh, issues here, uh, street light retrofit that's addressing energy conservation and dark skies, uh, recycling and composting, uh, the city's continuation of sustainable purchasing practices, and then, of course, uh, periodically updating the Climate Action Plan. And then finally, health, safety and hazardous materials, uh, uh, also a very important, um, topical area driven by climate change. You'll know this, a number of the issues are related, uh, to that adaptation and resiliency, flooding. Uh, that's also addresses sea level rise. Um, and this is, uh, this largely addresses state requirements, but there are some, uh, additional, uh, topical areas that are added on because of the importance to the city. Next slide. So some of the key policy, uh, topics that we've addressed, uh, health and all policies. Uh, the sea level rise and resiliency, uh, as you are aware, are increasingly challenging issues, and so we have both policies and programs, uh, for your consideration that are, uh, focused on those topical areas. And of course, the proximity to the airport has, for a long time, uh, raised, uh, challenges and, uh, the need for uh, policies and programs related to noise reduction and airport hazard reduction. Uh, and some of the, uh, key programs, uh, related to health and safety hazards, uh, addressing um, emergency exercises, the noise ordinance and noise studies are critical to maintaining a, um, a low-level noise environment than, than, uh, the grading org institutions. So it was a very quick overview. Um, the, uh, um, Darcy's touched on the schedule earlier, but I'll talk a little bit more detail about that. We're um, right now, at the, as Darcy pointed out, the preliminary draft stage, and this is, um, really a check-in with you to make sure we've got it right before the EIR gets too far down the road in this preparation. So if there's some changes that affect, have some effect on environmental considerations, now's the time for us to, uh, address those, so that the, when we, um, publish the public review draft, the next draft of the housing element, this is the one that is, uh, subject to, fully subject to the environmental review. Um, we've got a study session, uh, scheduled for next month to, uh, look at the uh, downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. I know that, uh, every, that, everybody's waiting out with great anticipation. You've already looked at the Streetscape standards and, uh, now we'll see the complete plan. Uh, in the spring, we'll have a, a study session on the housing element, uh, which is kind of on a separate and parallel track with the general plan and specific.
But it wouldn't ring while you were.
Okay.
On your meeting.
All right. And then, um, we'll, uh, all, well, the, while the EIR is being prepared, uh, over the next several months, we'll have opportunities for kind of, uh, rolling out of the plans and increase, uh, public, um, um, uh, public engagement, community engagement. We'll have a presentation, at least one, on the, um, the general plan to the general public as well as the housing element. And, uh, then everything kind of comes together in the fall, when the IR is done, and we'll go through public hearings. So, um, that's the kind of quick overview. Uh, I know that's a lot to, uh, take in in a short period of time, but we wanted to make sure there's plenty of time for the commission, council members to weigh in with their comments and questions, and then as the mayor pointed out, um, leave time for some helpful input comments. So I'd be happy to answer any questions right now, uh, or, uh, we can go to, uh, back, can hand it back to the mayor for, um, the, the mid part of it.
Jim, I think we could do it all in one. We could, we could ask questions for you, but go to council in order, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Perfect. So Vice Mayor, you're up first, and we, we ask that everybody be polite and, uh, make sure that everybody gets to say something. So if we could time it down, I don't want to say five minutes, but if you could, you know, six minutes or less would be awesome. Thank you.
I'm going to try to go way faster than that. Um, so I'm sorry, and I didn't realize this in looking before, but when you talk about access to the station, you talk about Caltrain, BART, uh, SAM Trans, you are missing a huge element there that we need to include, which are corporate shuttles and school buses. So that needs to be a part of this plan that is not there, because those are the ones that go in there now. And I would like to see something, please, on enhancing the access to the station and the station area because the current development has really messed that up. So anything we can do in this plan, and I know this is not the station plan, but this is in here as far as the city goes, that need, we need to be comprehensive, and if we leave out those elements, which are a reality, um, that makes us look bad. So please include those in there. And then you have, um, I believe there's a section on high-speed rail. Um, I don't see it there, but we do want to, um, say, uh, more than we're just working with them. Can you bring that part up real quick so that I cannot take up everybody's time?
All right, just give me a second. You want to see the actual policy?
Yeah, 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 please.
Okay, just give me one second.
It'll go a lot faster that way. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I flagged it earlier. It's on page, uh, three dash ten. Let me bring it up.
Thank you.
And just give me one second.
Sure, sure, sure.
Here we go. This policy right here, M two dash two, right?
Okay, yeah, um, high-quality, well-designed, um, integrated system, planned development projects, existing transit modes. City will continue to request varying alternatives are considered, including the alternative um, that provides the least impact on the city. We do want to, at this point in time, I think it's extremely important here to include integration of one station for Caltrain, BART, high-speed rail at this location because it's just insane to think that there would be three separate stations at an intermodal center. So we, I think we need to be specific that that is very, very important. And then two, when you mentioned, um, uh, high, our airport, okay, we do need to emphasize, and I'm not sure where it was, and I don't want to take up a lot of time here, but the direct link between this station and SFO, that we want to enhance the interconnectivity between all of transportation, the stations and the, um, transit, please. And then, um, I'm, since I want to go quickly here, the parks, um, I do hope that we are including dog parks. And then, as I mentioned to staff earlier too, we want to be able to access hopefully some grants throughout. So wherever, if we're talking about parking or we're talking about parks, I hope we can include, um, bio swells and that, whatever improvements we're making, whether it's along El Camino Real in transit, that, that type of, uh, whether it's sewer runoff or water, uh, enhancements. Those would be my big areas. And then as one final note, and I hope I'm not anywhere near six minutes, is that, um, when we have developments and stuff, and I didn't, didn't quite see this in it, we do want to try to enhance childcare facilities. And I'm not sure if it's in a different section. It might come into the housing section, but we have big developments that are happening right now, which we are very proud of. And as I understand it, the FAA is prohibiting us from including childcare facilities in that area. I think if we work with our Congresswoman, Jackie Speer, that we may be able to receive some sort of exemptions here, but it is very important for our growing community that we enhance childcare wherever we can. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think I've covered it all. Thank you.
Great comment. So I think, um, Vice Mayor, I think that the word intermodal would be, like, we'd want to see that throughout. when we were speaking about the different stations.
And it's modes, but we, we really tragically left out the intermodal aspects of corporate shuttles, school buses and stuff that, I mean, that's, that's the reality. That's what happens right now. And we, we need to look like we know what's happening in our plan. So if we are enhancing anything that clearly needs to be stated that that's what's happening here. So please, we just need to expand our definitions because you've only listened to transit providers and not the corporate partners and the school partners.
That was exactly six minutes. So thank you very much. Councilmember Snyder, are you prepared to go next?
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
To the public, I don't know how many council members I met with staff earlier today. And in an hour's time, we got through basically mainly circulation on that. So I'm going to limit my comments in six minutes mainly to circulation, but there's additional comments that I guess will have to be done in the future or offline for the other sections. Generally, Councilman or Vice Mayor Papin said it. Every time we talk about in our goals or actions about working with transportation agencies, the language needs to be tightened up that we are doing what is best for Millbrae and they're going to work with us. And it kind of is scattered throughout M two point two, M two point three, but staff, we've already talked about that. There's no discussion of a, or an actual action for grade separations and our ability to safely evacuate neighborhoods. And, you know, using Marina Vista as a good example there. So we need a new addition on grade separations. When we deal with SFO, SFO receives federal funds. And that means that their environmental documents are under NEPA, also CEQA, but NEPA. But in this document, we have to bring in NEPA guidelines too. And you can see them scattered throughout the sections where it says, well, this is per CEQA, blah, blah, blah. We need to add in NEPA. One of the only ways we will ever get SFO to do any mitigation is to include their guidelines in our general plan and hold them accountable. So the vibrations from the airport, the air pollution from the airport and the noise from the airport. And that kind of goes into the fourth section too. We've got to bring NEPA into it and we've got to use the federal historic guidelines, not just the state historic guidelines. That is the only tool for mitigation. Throughout the definition of how to move cars through Millbrae, it, it doesn't reflect how to make sure that the people living on these streets are safe too. We talk about safety for pedestrians. But I gave an example to staff today that my mom, my best example, is 94. It takes her about five minutes to get into a car now. It's, it's, if you've got elderly family members, watch them and, and try to see the world through their eyes, which brings me to the another part. Well, I'll come back to that. So if we could look at each, the language in there and make sure it's not just how quickly we move cars through Millbrae, but how safely we maintain our neighborhoods and the feeling of our people when they try to get in and out of their homes on that. I love the addition of delivery trucks. I think we should have franchise fees for them. There are so many now that my, I can sit in front of my house and watch seven or eight different delivery trucks every day on that. And they're driving our roads, they're making a profit, and my guess is they don't pay a franchise fee. So we need to investigate that. We need to include Caltrain Baby Bullet because with the real speed that high speed rail can travel, the Baby Bullet can only, is only about four minutes slower than high speed rail. So when they're talking about the devastation, high speed rail wants to put on Millbrae for a four minute difference between San Francisco and San Jose, we need to make sure that we've got that in our study. And I think this is something I didn't talk to staff. As we move El Camino from six lanes to four lanes, then I think our public wants to know that we've studied how we're going to handle those, that those cars moving up and down El Camino Real. I don't know if that's an additional M or just a goal. I would like to see us include a green street policy along with safe streets. It's something entirely different. As we get hotter, trees are going to cool off the area for pedestrians. So it also fits with the safety element on there. I talked to staff, they're already going to look into this, but our schools put a lot of cars on the road, both for taking kids to school and picking them up. So potentially working with our school districts to create a transportation demand management process, although my guess is schools don't have to, but I think it's in our best interest to get the schools to do their TDM plans. And that's M one point one seven, M point one five. Oh, these, these are the ones I like, one, seven, one, five. I'm really glad that we are looking at the impacts to Millbrae of outside developments. Everybody watching this should be aware that Burlingame is going through the permitting process or citing process of a number of high density projects immediately on our border. Those people are going to drive our roads. And I am, I, I'm not happy that apparently we can't do anything because we didn't write to them when they were doing their specific plans and EIRs. But if anything that we can do to hold Burlingame accountable for the traffic they're putting on our street, they'll get the money for having new residents and will pay the price. Under M three point seven on bike pedestrian facilities, Shade is a facility. So it's not listed in there. If we could just go ahead and add that on M three point three trail access. We are also part of the Bay Ridge Trail if we can work with SFPUC. So if you could add Bay Ridge and it's going to take time and work, but Bay Ridge up there. Then I'll just jump quickly into implementation program. I don't know what page, but it's C three point three. It says, we're not going to look at parking until 2025. By then, hopefully we've recovered from COVID and parking will be held because all of the transportation units will have their people back at our train station and parking all over. So I think that needs to be moved forward. Same thing with enforcement. And enforce, I think we need to start in our plan or somehow enforcing the transportation agencies who are not living up to their current agreements with the city of Millbrae. For example, BART and policing on those. Just real quickly on public art and addition of a new goal or action because MCAC is already working on a Millbrae Public Art Plan, which per our discussion today is needed for us to set a developer fee. We have, I don't know Nexus or not, but we need that. And I will send you a lot on trees. My biggest concern is the main tree planting horizon is 2025 to 29, which is frankly 10 years too late. The number one thing we can be doing for climate change is planting and maintaining our trees. So that's really got to move forward. If we are serious about climate change and climate resiliency, it is something we start working on now. That whole tree section. Thank you. Am I six minutes?
Perfect.
Okay. I have other stuff, but there's just not enough time. So hopefully there'll be more time for the, the other categories.
And I'm sure Jim and Darcy, if Councilmember Schneider needs, wants to email any questions there that could get done or comments that could get done through email. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a whole, it's very complicated, the noise impact from San Francisco. The main thing we need to do for us is stop having FAA and Caltrans use A weighted noise instead of C weighted low frequency noise. The changing of that metric is huge for us in terms of the mitigation and our ability to attract funding to improve quality of life, health and noise reduction.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Councilmember Holiver, are you prepared to speak next?
I am. I will try to get through these rapid fire here.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the streets section, page 12, and this is sort of piggyback on the Councilmember Schneider was saying. I'd like to see some reference to implementing the traffic mitigation measures that were identified in the MSASP, such as the second right turn lane off of Millbrae Avenue. It's been going on four years now. Still haven't seen any progress on that. As well as the other mitigation measures that were mentioned. In the transit section on item M two point one inch fifteen, the discussion about coordinating with Caltrain and BART to ensure that Millbrae Station is well maintained, has adequate parking, continues to provide high quality service. We could also maybe add safety. It's a safe environment. That would improve that section. On the parking section, I think one thing that was missing was permit parking and perhaps using that as a tool to mitigate neighborhood impacts from new developments. For example, I believe there's a development that has been proposed that has 100 units and only about 20 or so parking spaces, which I think would cause a, you know, if something like that were to be built, cause a great deal of impact on, on the surrounding neighborhood. So that could be a potential tool. In the parks and recreation section, I'm sure Councilmember Schneider would have gotten to this if she had more time, but if we could add a reference to trying to implement some type of an aquatics program in Millbrae. What, you know, I don't think we'll be able to build our own pool, but perhaps partnering with the high schools or with the Meadows Swim Club or the city of San Bruno when their new pool is installed. We need to have those conversations going constantly to get something going. The section on historic districts. You know, each of the items that were mentioned, each of the recommendations really related more to, you know, historic markers or historic, you know, landmarks, not really to an actual historic district. So I think maybe that's something we can look into as well.
Come on, come up here.
Look into designating a historic district. And then the public safety sections, specifically fire and policing seven point eight and seven point nine. Perhaps we could also look into a community facilities district to help fund those services on new developments. I don't know if that's really a general plan or if that's more of just kind of a policy consideration for the council. I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiver. Councilmember Fung. Andrew.
Hi. Thank you so much. I was just typing up a few. Okay. Hello.
We hear you.
Okay, good. Okay. I just want to make sure because I was having some trouble a little earlier today. I've had an early meeting with the staff, which is, you know, we have an opportunity to discuss a number of items here. And as I go through the, the documents, I think, you know, as we look at the the future development on the east side, especially Rollins area, you know, we need to look at ways to integrate those new developments into the west side business district and how it would benefit. You know, the, some business development on the west side as well. And also look for and explore any grade separation program possible so that we can ensure we capture these opportunities and provide ways to ease the potential traffic impact, you know, on future Millbrae Avenue. As we bring in, you know, the Alexandria project and having additional people coming into our Millbrae, preparing for the workforce population. So, you know, doing those, identify the possibility of a gray separation project and look for you know, sort of regional funding for this would be valuable to us. We need to implement or explore the opportunities to implement some EV charger and solar panel potentially with municipal clean energy. I think they have some programs for that. I think the plan also described, you know, potentially having future parking structures. Areas where we can identify as, you know, EV charging stations and solar panels of those areas as well. They, I think they have some programs for that and then they certainly have a lot of funding to do this. So we did not address in the document of potential establishing parking authorities to manage our future parking resources. I don't know if this is something the general plan should document. Perhaps the staff can address that.
Andrew, you froze on.
Do you have that discussion in there?
Can you repeat that, please? Because you've
Can you hear me okay?
Now we got you.
All right, let me just try to, let me try that again. Maybe we need to turn up, maybe turn off my video. Hopefully that's better.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't think it addresses the question of potentially establishing parking authorities for the, to manage our future parking resources. Like, you know, whatever the parking structures or any future parking resources that we develop as we sort of continue to re-envision our downtown parking situations and the city-owned parking lots. So whether or not we need to address the parking authority questions in the general plans, perhaps this is something that we need to look into. We also need to sort of develop a plan to modernize and perhaps redevelop some of the existing park resources as well. I know that the Melissa State Park is on the radar for redevelopment, also the dock park. Also, we need to find find a way to put in a dock park as Councilmember, Vice Mayor has talked about a little earlier. So I think that's something we should be addressing in the general plan. So those are the few comments I have.
Good comments. Okay, can we move to the commissioners, please? Shall we start with Commissioner Joe?
Hello, good evening, evening. I think I'll be short because I, some of the things I mentioned, I, I was thinking of had already been mentioned. Thank you so much for the general plan. I think it looks great overall, the elements that we're seeing today, and it's clear that a lot of work has been put into it. Just a few things. Council, Vice Vice Mayor Papin, I'm getting everybody's titles confused, mentioned the high speed rail. And one thing I noticed at the very beginning in page three dash two of the circulation element, it's not mentioned there. So I think it would be good to bring that up in there. And then again, with the shuttles, I, I agree as well that the shuttles should be included in there as well. It is talked about, there are shuttles talked about in that element that you brought up for bus and shuttle services on page three dash 10. And it does reference other agencies and organizations, but maybe if you added the corporations and schools, that might help to further clarify that. I noticed that there is no, I guess there are diagrams referred to, and it would be good to look at those diagrams. I think once we get those, we would want to see a little bit more in there. Let's see. There is a reference to three point M three point one zero, three point 10, Safe Roots to Schools. So I really like seeing that. And I, I feel like maybe it can be further developed there. So I had a thought in my mind, but now it went out of my head. So I'll, I'll email more about that. But I think something about the, oh, the schools and the further developments and we have a lot of increase in our population or hopefully as we have more housing. And I think we need to really emphasize, make sure to emphasize the impact on schools. And I'm not sure if that would, that would be going to the Safe Roots to School section or to another area. I do, as Councilmember Schneider mentioned, the parking standards, I noticed it's on tap for 2026 to 2030. And I think we really need to move that forward, to move that to, to move it up a little bit so it'll be sooner addressed because monitoring the parking supply and figuring out our parking standards, I think it's too late if we have, you know, to be working on that later, especially if we do have the mitigation of parking management plan to be, you know, in the 2022 to 2025 range. So I, I'd like to see that sooner than later. And I think we have so many things that are building out so much development and so much that's changing in our city that they don't, I don't think it's a good idea to postpone that until 2026 before we even talk about it. The historic element, I really like that part of it. And I think it's good to get started on that. We don't have a lot of historical elements, but I think we're pretty clear on most of them. Thankfully to our historical society. So I think that should be hopefully something that can be worked on further to be able to, to emphasize that. And then the grading and noise ordinances in seven dash 21 or page, page seven dash 21. I'm really glad to see that in there and that it's going to be a priority, I think, with, with the coming time. I also, I can't find it. I was reading it earlier, but the note about neighboring cities and when they have a development and for us to be able to write a letter to them and find out what the implications are going to be on our city. I think that's really important as well. So I'm glad to see that in there. I don't have any further comments at this time. Thank you very much.
Great comments. Thank you very much. Vice Chair. Great comments. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Davis, are you ready?
Sure. One more time with the huge thank you to the team. We can't say it enough time. This is a huge amount of work and thank you, thank you, thank you. A couple of things, I just want to say good things. There's a lot of small steps, especially in the green waste, energy efficiency kind of areas, a lot of small things, you know, encouraging us as homeowners and residents to compost more, for the city to purchase things if they can in a more sustainable way. All those little things will add up. They seem so small, but the more of us that do it and the more often we do it, the better it will be. So I'm glad to see so many small things listed. In the mobility section, I know it's mentioned, but it's just how, we've got to figure out a way to how to get people up and down the hill without a car. You know, we're going to have all those stations. And so, you know, I don't know if it's, we add anything, but just to remember that we've got to find some better ways to get people up and down the hills. Councilmember Schneider mentioned, you know, that the schools generate a lot of car trips to and from the schools. And you know, when I'm saying yes, it's how do we get kids, more kids to walk to school? And that goes with safe streets and all that. But how do we encourage more kids to walk to school so that we don't have to have all those car trips? And I too heard the dog park thing. Thank you, Gina, for mentioning that. And then I've got a couple of technical questions I'm taking back to the staff later. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. How, so shall we go to see council member, excuse me, Commissioner? Alan, Commissioner Alan, are you ready, prepared?
I can take a moment or come back to me.
Sure. Del Negro, would you like to go next? Del Negro?
I very much appreciate this level of detail in this plan from staff. This is very well done. I just want to call that out again. I guess some of the things I'm interested in within the transport plan, I don't see any call out that really specifically identifies making sure that we have more than one access point to a community. I know we have some developments coming that may affect this, including the high-speed rail, things like the Bayside community as well as the Marina Vista community, where there is limited access points for residents driving in and out. I'd like to see something really called out within our plans that establishes a policy saying, hey, we need to always have a safe multiple access points. That way, if a development does come, it's basically buffered against as part of the city's goals. From the parks perspective, I've heard some really great responses, having been on the park and rec community and commissioned before. I am very heartened to hear what I've heard as far as the dog facilities desire and the maintain, the new facilities to be built out in this plan. I am interested, obviously, in the spur trail in the 1974, June 4th plan, 1974. One of the objectives was to complete the entire length of the spur trail for our community. I want to make sure that's maintained in our plans moving forward. That's a big objective, I think, still for the city. And I don't know if it's being called out again very specifically like it was in the original plan. Of course, protect, restore and enhance can be opposing parts. And if you look at NRC, those words are used. I just want to make sure that protect and restore, not block us from the enhancements to be able to complete those type of projects. In combination, there's also a section here about creeks and creek restoration. We do have a creek in Millbrae that could use restoration. Glad to see that as an element. That's the Millbrae Avenue. There's a creek in parallel to Millbrae Avenue. And there's a bridge at the back of that historic bridge that I think we still want to see at some point possibly restored if it can be. The kids to schools, absolutely great comments. Love seeing that. You know, I know, for example, I walk my kids to school every day, Richmond Drive, getting to cross it and spur trail from Tioga. It's dangerous still. We've got to find a solution for that. The section about safety, I do know that in 7.7, I want to make sure that we update for biotech. You know, those types of elements are going to be in there, I assume. So I make sure we call it out, make sure that an element that we do address are those changes and hazards associated with biotech that needs to be covered. And in the climate change and the 7.2 section, I'm very attuned to fire risk, California climate change. My hometown caught fire, burnt down and had a disaster. I know we see a section about fire, but there's not a lot about fire and open space land and about addressing the risks around power equipment, addressing the risks around access points, like I've said before, to the Lamita spur trail section. You know, those are between homes and it's really important that we address at least a section within that 7.8 and 7.3 change, section that really calls out the open space land access for fire abatement and firefighting. In addition to obviously the buildings that they do cover, which is in great detail. I'm happy to see that. Right now, I would say the other thing is. Well, we've been at that for now. I want to say again, thank you. It's a fantastic report.
What's yours? Thank you. Commissioner Wong, would you like to go next?
Sure, thank you. So looking at the big picture, kind of thinking big picture again on these issues. You know, an example is we did in the IR in San Francisco where I work and we were installing groundwater wells. And the objective was really clear. We're adding capacity, water production, making use of local resources. But in our general plan, our ECR downtown development plan, there's so much in here that it's still, to me, it seems like it's lacking over our arching goal or focus. Or what's the point of what we're doing? And what are we trying to achieve? And I think that, you know, besides these sections, a lot of the sections are good. I think we all have been going to these meetings. We know what it's about. But I think for a lot of the public, you know, a lot of these changes, there's going to be tremendous transition in our city. And there's going to be a lot of groin pains. There's going to be a lot of public concerns. And I think we need to just spell out exactly what we're doing, explain it, specify it. So people will know that our growth isn't haphazard, that we recognize it, we embrace it. If it is urban village, you know, the goal I think would be to address those urban issues, the problems that come with urbanization, which might be traffic congestion, you know, crime, litter pollution, et cetera. We need to spell that out, that that should be our focus. If we do have a goal or a theme for our city or a motto, you know, it can help us prioritize all these different sections and what we want to focus on and help people understand what we're trying to achieve. It'll help with this transition. So I think that along with this general plan, we should have a good outreach plan that talks about what's our new city motto? How are we reinventing our city? We can even include fun things to engage the public, like, you know, what's our city bird or what's our motto? What's our city tree or city animal? I think these will go a little bit of ways towards helping people transition into this. So that's one, one thing. If, if we are intermodal station, we might talk about, you know, we're not just intermodal station in itself. It's like, we don't want to be a bus stop. We want to be something better, like an international destination where everyone from all over the world and all over the state come. And if we call ourselves, you know, have a model like international city, you know, it really puts us on the map. You know, it defines us as like being sophisticated, urbanized. It's an invitation to people that embraces diversity acceptance. There's different themes that we've thrown out in these meetings, such as urban village, intermodal station, being an international city that I think we need to really spell out in the preface to this general plan. So people know exactly what we're trying to achieve and helps guide all our planners and designers and where all our money goes. Specifically, just a couple of notes on specifics for the plan. I think that there could be a lot more discussion about wind and calming throughout the document. Whenever it talks about trees and planting and canopies, we should focus on developing planting plans to address the wind. Break up the wind forces that are really big in our city. An example is Millbrae Central Park where the wind blows through the park rendering it almost useless sometimes. You set up things on the picnic table, they blow right off during certain times that they are. And the solution would be if there was an improved planting plan, a little bit more thought about how to arrange the plants, orientate the buildings. I think we did that with the community center, trying to block the wind from the west. But they should be done throughout the entire city and it's like downtown El Camino, it's going to be wind whipping through up and down El Camino. That's like north, south and all the people walking along there could get really cold, just like yesterday was crazy. It was like one day of cold and wind and it's, you know, if we do this right and we plan and put throughout the document, you know, addressing wind concerns, I think that would be good. Palm trees, just don't cut it for wind blocking and reducing energy, wind energy forces. Last one I'll mention here is section 6.1, it talks about permanent open space dedication. I'd be really cautious about designating things as permanent open spaces. Said it was a condition of new developments and especially having developers designate or identify places that would be permanent open space. So I'm not sure exactly what we're trying to achieve. But just like with our deal with the airport, I don't think, you know, that lands next to the airport are really good to designate as permanent anything because we don't want to be ecocentric. We should be more environmentally, you know, I guess, more conserving and more developing and not just, you know, let wetlands be wetlands. But I think, you know, with sea level rise, you know, Mother Nature has tremendous forces and we need to manage all these locations of open space in any permanent open spaces. And that's it.
Thank you. Six minutes, exactly. So staff, I hope that these reports were as good as yours. I mean, I got a lot out of this too. And as you can see, they gave some good direction and some good thoughts. That's what I'm thinking. But I'd like to open it up to the public now and see if there's any additional comments from them. Ready to help here, looking to see who's here. I don't, is there, Eduardo, do you see any hands raised?
I do.
I do. Nathan Chan. Nathan, would you like to comment?
Yes, very much so. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak on this very important matter. Earlier today, I sent an email with some comments on this specific draft of the general plan and elements. So I won't repeat myself. There was some stuff that I didn't include in that email that I wanted to talk about tonight though. So one is that I like that the general plan calls out the need for new development to plan for, plan for and mitigate against sea level rise. But I do think that we need to think carefully about what existing built areas might be impacted and how to strategies to cope and adapt to that. So for example, there's a document published by ABAG and MTC titled resilient housing policies. Some of the things that they propose include coming up with hazard overlay zones that sort of identify the parts of a city that are more at risk to climate risks like fire and sea level rise and planning for what additional development standards might be required for those areas. But then also potentially establish a transfer of development rights program if those areas would be better suited for infrastructure to protect against these climate risks. I think that, you know, as difficult as the conversation is to have about manage or treat, that's something that we need to start thinking about and the sooner the better. And so I would like to see some part of the general plan at least begin that discussion. You know, one thing about the airport is that the, in some ways, they're our best partner on sea level rise because they're cover most of our shoreline. So we should figure out how to cooperate with the airport to protect our city and our neighboring cities against sea level rise. I think they would be very, very motivated to address that. And then to piggyback on something that Commissioner Davis talked about, about how do we get people up and down the hill without a car? E-bikes are definitely taking off as a solution and they do, I think they would be a possible solution for our city. But we need to figure out how we can create a safe infrastructure for people to use e-bikes. So physically separated bike lanes, storage facilities downtown so that these pretty expensive machines are secure. That's something that I don't think I've seen in here right now, and I think it should be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Mayor Fogarty, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention just a few things. First is addressing traffic circulation near the multimodal station. If we are not able to extend California Drive because of the plans of California High-Speed Rail Authority in taking the lands that would otherwise be the California Driving Extension. Secondly, addressing the elimination of parking requirements for housing near transportation and how that is going to affect our neighborhoods and how it will affect parking in the downtown. And the effect of new zoning laws allowing up to four units to be built in single-family residential housing areas and how that's going to affect traffic circulation, parking. And as former Mayor Schneider was talking about, the, the safety of our folks who live in those areas affected. So for instance, I live on Hillcrest. We have a lot of through traffic. We do have a lot of homes where folks are parking in their front yards because their cars have been hit while parked on Hillcrest. And if we increase the density as these laws are, are trying to have people do to enhance housing production, that issue is going to become a much greater issue than it is now. So I think our traffic and circulation plans need to be looking at the effect of all of the most recent laws that affected the density of housing in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Fung? Margaret, are you on?
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members as well as planning commissioners in listening to my comments. I have three comments that I would like to point it out. First of all, I like to see our downtown parking plan to be implemented sooner rather than later as it generates a significant amount of revenue for a city. We need to, we continue revamp our strategy to up our city revenue. That is one thing. The second thing is that we need to have a better public transportation system to connect our city with SFO so that we can capitalize on the tourism industry, which is now we're covering. Third, I read about Burlingame revitalizing the Burlingame Water Fund on Bay Shore Highway today. I do see that our city also need to put some effort in developing the area all the way from Ashton and Mill Bay Avenue, all the way down on Mill Bay Avenue to the water fund. We need to better connect the passage so that our residents could easily walk or bike down to the water fund. I bike down there with my kids, but the passage these days is very dangerous because there are cars getting in on our freeway. It's not the best recreational, it's not the best passage for recreations. So now, I think that with gateway project being complete and the life science building will soon be breaking ground, this is a higher priority for us to get a better passage connect all the way from from Mill Bay Avenue down to water fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have two council members with their hands up. So for the sake of time, guys, I'm going to ask that you please make these comments brief, like everybody else in the, in the public. I don't see any other public raised hands. Eduardo, am I correct? I don't see any other public raised hands. Eduardo, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, so Councilmember Schneider, would you like to go for three minutes, please?
Sure. I'm going to send staff some more updates with what One Shoreline is doing, but I wanted to comment on the public comment about SFO. Congressman Mullen did pull eight million dollars to One Shoreline, four million dollars to be used to coordinate between Milbury and Burlingame.
Assemblyman, Assemblyman Mullen.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Assemblyman Mullen on that. But the SFO plan for sea level rise actually wants the adjacent cities to do the work on their west side. And the managed lane project didn't do any drainage of water that runs onto or falls onto the freeway. It actually drains into Milbury, at least what staff has told me. So even with the managed lane project, they just diverted stormwater into Milbury into Lamita Canal. So we should make sure that our disaster plan, I just checked it really quickly, it's in there, it's kind of vague, but maybe I can help you strengthen up that language on that. And so SFO, I'm sorry, SFO is not our friend, period. And we can't, we can't plan on them being our friend. They're not going to.
Councilmember Fung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just real quick here, I also looked at the water conservation section of it, and I think we can boost up a little bit. Water conservation is such an important, important initiative, I think we really need to consider you know, taking more of a bolder action and policy decisions on that. So I think we should consider development plans, you know, for our future. We've got to be a leader in smart and bold water conservation policies. So as far as recycle water, you know, we talked about this before, we need to take bold actions to ensure we develop our capability in gray water recycling and delivery effort, you know, especially for some large-scale landscaping, construction, and even toilet flushing purposes, you know. Examine the building code updates, you know, on dual plumbing for future mixed-use and large residential developments. You know, we should be a leader in this, as water conservation, and it's so important, right, for future of our city, and just like any other city in Northern California. Water is a very limited resource. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So Darcy, I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak, and hopefully I didn't push everybody. But I think everybody kind of got, you know, was productive and timing was impeccable. And what I'd like to do, Darcy, is, could you pull up that first slide of all the people that participated in putting this together for us? I'd like to end it how we started it.
No problem. I regret, though, I didn't put everyone who was on, on our roster here, but I will say, a lot of a lot of touchdowns, a lot of field goals tonight by your team tonight, to give us great feedback.
You took the words right out of my mouth, because I mean, it's like, oh my God, talk about one of those Super Bowl playoff games, it was like, tonight, we had the best players on both sides, right? And I just want to, I think we should acknowledge this consult, city and consultant team to put it together the way they did, and commissioners and council members coming together and with very positive, productive comments, I thought. And of course, our, our, our public, those that, I mean, there's nothing better than seeing some passion, right? We'll get the job done, like, like excellent, with the passion included. So I just wanted to, you know, put that up on the screen one more time, because, yeah, you guys threw the pass. And you talk about, you brought up the touchdown, I mean, you threw the pass, and I think that we took it and ran with it, both commissioners and council. I'm very grateful, and it is on time tonight because of organization and everybody that is, did their homework. And also because of the presentation, all the details were, you know, Ts were crossed and Is were dotted, so thank you guys very much. City Manager, did you want to close with anything else?
I would echo, thank you very much for your time. You know, we're well on our way, I think everyone, you know, kind of so, great input this evening, we made a lot of notes, and appreciate everyone taking the time information to us, so.
So with that, six forty-seven, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.